Good morning. Thank you for your attendance. I will now call the meeting of the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control District to order. The first thing on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on a proposed agreed board order with American Synthetic Rubber Company. This meeting is held in pursuant to KRS chapter seventy-seven and district regulations. Notice of this meeting has been published in newspaper. If you have a written version of your statement, please submit it to Mrs. Hamilton. After your presentation, all statements presented today will be part of the hearing record. There is only one agreed board order to be reviewed today. And I'd now like to ask Mr. Steve Karadik to read the agreed board order.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. The district branch to the board's consideration an agreement with the American Synthetic Rubber Corporation, which operates a chemical plant pursuant to a title filed permit in the area of Louisville known as Rivertown, to resolve three notices of violation. In the first notice of violation, the district alleges the company exceeded environmental acceptability goals for plant-wide fugitive emissions of 1,300 dinit. In 2007, the company requested a modification of the plant-wide fugitive emissions goal and proposed enhanced leak detection and repair as the best available control technology for toxins. In 2008, the district conditionally approved this request. A district review of emission records in 2015 showed that the company exceeded their requested modified goal every year after the request. The district issued a notice of violation in September 2015, and the company submitted a new request to modify the environmental acceptability goals a few months later. The company and the district entered a degree board order in 2016 that required the company to immediately implement the proposed leak detection and repair requirements that they had proposed in the new request for modification while the request was being processed. The proposed modification for fugitive emissions was approved and permitted in January of 2018. In the second and third notices of violation, the district alleges the company did not provide the utmost care and consideration in the operation of their facility, which resulted in the release of 3,000 pounds of 1,300 dinit on September 29, 2017, and 931 pounds of 1,300 dinit on May 25, 2018. The district further alleges that the company did not sufficiently address the recommendations from their investigation of the September 2017 release that may have prevented the May 2018 release. On September 29, 2017, the company isolated a run of pipe without evacuating the 1,300 dinit from inside the pipe. The chemical heated up and expanded, causing a gas heap to fail, releasing 3,000 pounds of 1,300 dinit to the atmosphere. After the release, the company completed an internal investigation, which included a root cause analysis and recommended actions that could be taken to prevent the recurrence of the event. On May 28, 2018, the company isolated a run of pipe without evacuating 1,300 dinit from inside the pipe. The chemical heated up and expanded, causing a flange to leak, resulting in the release of 931 pounds of 1,300 dinit. Due to the similar nature of the events, the district's risk management plan coordinator performed an investigation into the company's process hazards analysis, their internal incident investigations, and the root cause analysis. The district determined that the company did not sufficiently address the recommendations from the investigation of the September 2017 release and did not sufficiently train employees about a known hazard from the process. After the May 2018 release, the company addressed the recommendations of the earlier investigation and installed pressure relief valves in the system. The company has completed all necessary corrective actions for the violations and has agreed to pay a penalty of $135,375 to resolve these notices of violation. The district recommends the board adopt the order as proposed.
Thank you very much. Would a representative of American Synthetic Rubber Company like to make a statement?
Yes, my name is Dennis Kinev, law firm across frontide. I represent American Synthetic Rubber Company. This agreed board order will resolve several ongoing matters between ASRC and the district, in fact, resolve all of the currently pending matters. The company appreciates the engagement that the district has provided throughout the process because this has been a long, difficult discussion, but we're happy to finally reach a agreement. ASRC continues to be committed to reducing actual emissions and to achieving the lowest possible emissions over time. In fact, when ASRC formally reports its fugitive emissions for calendar year 2018 to the district in April of this year, the results will show that the facility has achieved its lowest level of fugitive emissions of 1,300 dinit since 2005 and a 74 percent reduction in fugitive emissions since 2013. ASRC has achieved these improvements under controls of a rank among the most aggressive in the nation to manage this category of fugitive emissions, as the district determined publicly in September of 2017. The facility will continue its dialogue and engagement with the community in an effort to build greater understanding about its progress and its goals. As ASRC has said on prior occasions, the health and safety of plants, employees, and the surrounding community is ASRC's highest concern. The facility strives every day to reduce emissions and to achieve reductions in emissions that exceed what is required, and in that context remains optimistic of the future. We ask that you approve this report. Thank you.
Does anyone from the public wish to make a statement? Are there any questions from any board members? Now, being no further statements or questions, this public hearing is adjourned. Now, I will call the merger board meeting to order and recognize that we do have a clock. Mr. Tally, any introductions?
Yes, Chairman Hilton, I'd like to introduce a new employee, Lalo Charles. He is a new engineer one with the district.
Well, any public recognitions?
No, sir.
The minutes of the January sixteenth meeting have been sent out. Are there any questions regarding the minutes of the January meeting? Any questions from any board members? Can we get a motion to accept the minutes as submitted? Well, having no corrections, minutes stand, approve, and submit. Moving on to the public comment. Here at the time, do we have any value here?
I'm sorry.
Not this morning? Okay. Any unfinished business?
No, sir.
New business? I guess we will check up the agreed board order with American Synthetic Rubber. You've heard the district recommendation that we adopt the agreed board order with American Synthetic Rubber Company. What is the board's pleasure? Agreed. Is our motion to adopt the order as proposed? We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion about their order from any board members? All in favor of adopting the agreed board order with American Synthetic Rubber Company, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. To that's have it, the agreed board order with American Synthetic Rubber Company is Now, we go to committee reports. Staff report, Mr. Tally.
Thank you, Chairman Hilton. First of all, for the why I would like to thank the staff, ATCD for their hard work and commitment with the ASRC, ABO. I'm not sure that the community and the board are fully aware of the hours of work, research, meetings, discussions, disagreements, and analysis that goes into reaching this resolution. And it does take a bit. We have permit engineers, compliance engineers, our enforcement staff, county attorneys, legal team, management, and others were responsible for getting us to today. So, I just wanted to point that out to the board and recognize the hard work of staff on this issue. We had on Monday for 2019, our first Green Air Area Workshop Series. So, it was in a new space in the libraries, a much better space than we had last year. We had really decent turnout. We had about eighteen or twenty folks. We also had about eight or nine staff at the meeting. We had really good questions and comments, good discussion during the presentation. And we also had some good discussion after the meeting. And that's the benefit of having staff at meetings and for the community to attend because there is just a great opportunity during the meeting to have one-on-ones and then certainly after the meetings to have very informal conversations, ask the questions that you want to ask. And so, I encourage everyone as we go through the year for the upcoming Green Air Area Workshop Series, if you can make it, please attend. Really good information and good opportunity for interacting with the district and the community. I will also make a plea for the board. We are still currently down one board member, and we lost our one board member who was a resident of the West Louisville community. We would very much like to have another representative from that community on the board. So, if you know of anyone who might be interested and would make it to the board member, have them contact myself or Rachel, or go onto the mayor's website. There's an application process to get on boards. You folks are all aware of that. I had them apply and indicate that they were, are interested in ATCD, but we would very much like to have representation from West Louisville on this board. So, I wanted to make that plea this morning. For those keeping score, EPA is still open, and so that is really good news. I hope a little fun. But I have to tell you, a second attractive shutdown by EPA will really negatively impact the work that we're trying to get done. So, we're very happy to have our partners in the Environmental Protection Agency back to work.
Any residual effect from the first shutdown?
It slowed up a few things, but nothing that's really detrimental. Just put things back behind the public weeds. But they're back at it full steam, and so we shouldn't see any lasting effects from that first shutdown. And no impacts to the branch and the pipeline. Thank you. Rachel Hamilton, Michelle King, Tom Lord, and I had the opportunity to meet with and sit down in the pub to a new council member, Keisha Dorsey. And I think she's the third district. And it was really just a good opportunity for us to meet with Councilwoman Dorsey and her staff and bring her up to speed on the work of the district. But likewise, it was a great opportunity for us to sit down and learn about what Councilwoman Dorsey, her personal perspective on the district, and then her perspective from her conversation with the constituents in her district about the work that we do. And so, I will preface this by saying I thought it was a really good meeting, but here's my big takeaway. And let me preface this by saying that our observation I'm going to make is not one that the district wasn't aware of, but it's important to note that it's an observation that was corroborated by what Councilwoman Dorsey said. And it's important because she is, I think, in our few meetings with her, someone who has gone to great efforts to put her finger on the pulse of folks in her community to discuss quite a bit about these. And her takeaway was, the district does very good work in addressing their quality issues in our community, but we have a PR problem. We have a marketing problem, and we have a reception problem. And that's not, again, anything that we as the district are not aware of, but again, it was good to hear that from an outside third party because she is right. And so, to that end, we discussed the way that we would work with her office and work additionally out in the community to begin to address those issues. And so, as those plans that we discussed become a little bit more formed up, we will obviously bring those to the board and talk about some of the things that she thinks we would like to do and will help us improve the understanding of the work that the district does out in the community. So, quick few updates, two quick updates. We should have a signed contract for our ozone study within the next two weeks, and this is part of the delay that those two weeks off of what we're waiting for at EPA to confirm and modeling platform that will then inform us in terms of the contract language that we use. So, that was the delay that we have released that we have that resolved soon with that contract signing. The Louisville Resilience Office has a meeting to go over a draft of their final strategy. And so, we are getting very close, I think, to them having something that will be prepared and ready for public consumption. And as I think I mentioned at a previous board meeting, we will then take an opportunity to either have them come in or we will present and talk about the findings of that resilient study. Some of that has to do with the environment and air quality in particular, so I want to bring the board up to speed on that. Just wanted to make the board aware of this, and as part of Metro's overall work to address inequities in our community, they have a program that's called Leaks in Louisville. And that's a process that, as I explained before, is to just initiate a conversation throughout the community about the issues of inequity that exist, the specific inequities that were part of government at one time. So, it's just long overdue for those conversations to take place. But I did want to make you aware that they'll have a second showing of the movie, The Hate New Year. And so, as soon as we get a new time and place for that showing, I will get that information out to the board. And if other events are planned and are out there, I'll make sure that the board are aware of those. They'll be happening throughout the community over the next year. We have a great, great opportunity that I want the board aware of. We were approached by Belgium University in the next presentation. The science faculty of Belgium University has established a new lecture series called Origins and has selected the topic of environmental wellness of Old Howard River Valley for the spring 2019 series. This series will be open to all students and faculty at Belgium, but it aims to focus on the quantitative scientific underpinnings of those relevant topics. So, they want a relatively deep dive into the science behind these issues. Anticipated and confirmed speakers so far will address topics such as pollution and cardiovascular health, food and soil toxicology, and indoor air quality. And to that end, ATCD has been asked to present on outdoor air pollution, obviously. This spring semester series is supported by the Belgium University College of Health Professionals, the School of Environmental Studies, the Clara Booth Booth Loose Women and Science Fellowship Program, and Belgium College. And so, this is scheduled for Tuesday, March 26. And again, we just look forward to the opportunity to like to do more of this faculty of the meetings. Last night, we attended, I think, Alvaro Rachel, Michelle King, a meeting at Park Newfall for West Harrison County Community Task Force. MSD was there to discuss with the community initiatives to improve stormwater management of basins and inlets in that neighborhood, and they do have a flooding problem in that neighborhood. So, they talked about some of the things that they can do, what MSD is currently doing to address that. Basically, what MSD said is, of course, they will know about forecast when significant rain is going to go to the ground. They will have selected staff go out to all the long areas of flooding so they can get a handle of those situations. They talked about doing some education. Part of the problem is folks dump things into some of the basins and inlets, clog them up. And so, they talked about that and other initiatives to address that problem in the parking lot neighborhood. ATCD was there to discuss orders and then the tools that are currently available for citizens to report orders in their neighborhood. And it also gave us an opportunity to talk about some of the information that is incredibly important when they make those complaints. And then, I think the overriding point that I wanted to get across to the community was just how important it is for them to actually make those complaints. And know that they have order issues in West Louisville and other parts of our community, but we need them to actually make the complaint for us to do a, to act upon it and then to do a good investigation. So, you have to make the complaint, and you have to give us information that will benefit us in that investigation. And so, it was a good meeting, and had good questions from some of the board members of West Harrison. And again, look forward to future opportunities to meet with that group. So, I would like to talk about something that I think everyone at this table is aware of, the budget situation that Metro Government finds itself in. It is due to a shortfall in funding for the state-controlled pension plans, but I will point out that Metro has funded its share of its pension costs on time and has directed over the years. Metro Government itself is not behind, but the pension plans themselves are in a deficit position. The deficit that we are told that has to be made up in fiscal 1920 is 35 million, and will get as high as 65 million over the next five years. And what we've been told is without additional revenues, there will be, by necessity, the prospect of serious cuts to LMG programs, Louisville Metro building programs, services, and employees. And they had this in the paper, the employee count that they're talking about is plus 300 employees being laid off. For the record, ATCD was able to meet, all the agencies were asked to look for a 10% cut. ATCD was able to meet that 10% cut without cutting programs and/or staff this year. Additional cuts are required in the years to come. I'm not sure that I'll be able to sit before the board and say that we can meet those reductions without some hit to programs or to staff. So, having said that, if you agree, and so it's not my position to tell you how to feel about this, but if you do agree with the proposed method of increasing the insurance tax in order to fund this revenue shortfall, what I would ask, what I've been asked to ask is that you reach out to your council members to show your support for that because the final decision will lie with Metro Council. I will provide a list of those council members that are not completely committed, but by the same token, are not completely against. And so, this is the list I would give, Brandon Cohen, Cindy Fowler, Keisha Dorsey, Paul McCrayne, Barbara Shankman, David Gates, Mark Fox, and Madonna Flood. So, again, if you would like to support this course of action, please reach out to these council members in whatever form and method you are comfortable with to show your support and move them toward approval. From a personal perspective, I've been to quite a few of these meetings and discussions about the budget from my perspective. I think they are on track in that it is, without generating additional revenue, the only other way to meet this would be through the cuts that the mayor's office has proposed. And then, secondly, that the impact to our community will really be severe, and I think we all know in this room that this is going to hurt our most disadvantaged communities the most. So, I just wanted to put that out there. I think they made a good argument that the available opportunities for Metro to increase revenues or tax increases were very limited because a lot of the opportunities to increase taxes would require approval out of Frankfurt. There were limited opportunities to do things that would not require them going to Frankfurt knowing what to do. And so, the insurance increase was one that they could do locally, and then also provided the opportunity to generate sufficient funds to even begin to meet this deficit. So, that's what we were told was the reason that particular one was hit. So, just wanted to make the board aware of that and give you my position on the legitimacy of what we've been told.
What is the date of the scheduled vote on this budget for the Metro Council?
I want to say it's March 20. Well, the deadline is driven by March the 8th, I think, of March 21st, and that is because if they do proceed with the, going the insurance route, they have to provide that notice 100 days before the end of the fiscal year in order for it to take effect this year. And so, if they miss that date, even if they ultimately approve it, they won't be able to address it for this calendar year. So, that's the date that's driving this decision process.
And the 10% cut is for this upcoming fiscal year?
That they ask the agency to make it. And actually, what we were told is, in order to get ahead of it, if for some reason they have not resolved this issue, they will begin to start looking at and making cuts as soon as March 21st as feasible, where they'll just start to be, have to leave, start generating more savings. Lastly, today, we have a brief presentation of, I'm sorry.
Mr. Tally, in the discussions with the city government, have they discussed what's going to be done for future years in terms of raising revenue? Like, what are the discussions of user fees and other factors that might be down for the future increases?
Well, one thing first, they also pointed out specifically that the money generated by this increase would be solely to cover the pension costs and for nothing else. And so, they wanted to make that clear. And I think the other big thing out there that they would like to get done is the local option tax. And there has been some movement in Frankfurt on this, I think, in the last few months in terms of at least that discussion is back on the table and so forth. I'm not an expert on it, but it really gives a local jurisdiction the opportunity to increase a tax for a specific project or a specific time period, which will allow government to address some of the critical issues that are going on and obviously in Louisville, some of the infrastructure issues that are facing Metro Government. And those are the only ones that I'm aware of. You know, when we had the meeting, Daniel Fox was over on the, all in all, not counting the pension issue, he felt like our budget was in really good shape. And so, we were able to fund what we were doing. We did have a slight budget shortfall with the rainy day fund, was able to cover that, so that wasn't a particular issue. So, all in all, they felt pretty good about the budget going forward, not taking into account the problem with pension.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right. I want to end with a short presentation. So, we wanted to give a brief presentation on the 2018 ATCD year-end review. We will go through these slides pretty quickly. A lot of these things we have brought before the board over the course of the year 2018. And I also want to indicate to you, we hope to have for you in March, a written annual report that will go into more depth on the issues that we're going to move across, move over pretty quickly this morning, but please, if you have any questions as we go through it, different staff will be presenting, please stop us and ask us any questions that you I'm not sure if everyone can read this, and so I would take the liberty of reading this as a message from the director. It is no accident that Louisville is enjoying some of the cleanest air in its history right now. Even so, we know that there is work yet to be done. The community demands it, and the law requires it, but it cannot happen without the people of the Air Pollution Control District. ATCD scientists, engineers, technicians, compliance officers, environmental coordinators, and administrative professionals work diligently to safeguard our local air. I take great pleasure in sharing with you the good work that ATCD professionals did in 2018 and some of our plans for 2019. As always, we are committed to doing our work thoroughly and equitably, with a willingness to listen to the community and to respond respectfully and earnestly. Our overarching goal in 2019 will be the same as it has always been, to help make our air better today than it was the day before by implementing the laws and regulations under our authority as diligently as possible. So, you've all seen this, it hasn't changed. ATCD's goal is ensure healthy air for breathing and help local businesses meet air quality. And I will point out, one of the things that really allows us to do this better than most is the fact that ATCD can be more, but not less stringent than the state or federal regulations. is the fact that AGCD can be more, but not less stringent than the state of federal regulations. And that's how STAR came to exist. Just real quick, next of the date, as you can see, we've got a lot more of the rain up there than usual. We are in non-attainment for ozone, everyone here is aware of that. We have a seventy parts per billion standard, down from seventy-five. And currently, we are at about seventy-five. So we have work to do, and we will begin that work here shortly. Also, we are in a partial non-attainment for SO2. We have a proposed approval for a simple implementation attainment plan for SO2 at EPA currently. And so we hope to turn that green here pretty quickly. Okay, again, just highlighting by way of chart where we are with ozone. The shorter purple area is the new nat standard, and as you can see, we are well above it. We are in marginal non-attainment out of the four ozone, which is the lowest category. Now into some good news, Louisville's found a particular history, just a great trend. The light yellow or green area is the standard, and so you can see we are well below that. We have a twelve Michael Graham standards, and we have a design value of about ten point one currently. Same positive trend for sulfur dioxide. We have a seventy-five parts per billion standard and a current design value around eleven. And so I think everyone is aware, in large part, this is due to the changeover at Kain Run to Gas and the close to billion dollar in control that we're putting on in Washington.
Yep, to demonstrate about the ignorance, can you help define the redesign value?
It's the standard by which, so they looked at over three years, and they basically averaged out the rate over that period. Yes, it's based on actual monitoring. These last two charts are just our day-to-day air quality index. This one is for twenty eighteen, and we also have twenty seventeen. These are for all polluters. So what I'd like to point out on both of these is the fact that there is more green and yellow, which are for, green is for good days, yellow for moderate days. So by and large, air quality is pretty good. And any exceedances that we have in this community are largely due to ozone. So that's our big motive in terms of our air quality index. And then lastly, for me, just a quick update on total air toxins in our community. It's been updated for twenty seventeen numbers. From our electric generating utilities, we have an overall decrease from four point seven million pounds to about eight hundred and fifty-one thousand pounds, thus an increase of eighty-two percent. From our non-electric generating utilities, down from three point four million to one point three million, a decrease of about sixty-two percent. Which gives us a total decrease in air toxins in this community of about seventy-three percent. Any way you look at it, that is solid, solid and significant improvement for our community. So next up, we'll have a discussion on our air monitoring, and I think Billy is going to do it.
Just wanted to provide the board with some highlights for two thousand and eighteen. We continue to enhance our staff capabilities. The staff in air monitoring is outstanding, and they're always looking to improve. And we're always looking for opportunities to enhance capabilities. We added our air monitoring chemist, which is crucial in our project to monitor air toxins and moving forward to monitor further VOCs at Arcana's Lane site, which is mandated by the latest ozone rule. We finally have a fully-staffed quality control section, which are the folks in the field that gather the data. They've done an outstanding job of producing quality data shorthanded. So we're very happy to have that section fully staffed. We've also partnered with US EPA in the next generation technology measurements on the RIR project that you heard a lot about. This is always beneficial for our staff to learn new technologies and to partner with other agencies and share information. In addition to that, we've also assisted the local Green Heart project, and we continue to do that by testing sensors and providing our own data to allow them to calibrate their sensors. The improvements we've made to the actual network, including upgrading continuous pollution monitoring technologies, in particular, our particulate matter network is undergoing another technology upgrade to a optical technology. We consolidated Southwick Environment Training Sites, which allow us to better use funding for better technology and get better quality data. And we've upgraded our Farms Training Site with a gas chromatography system to measure the air toxins. Our goals moving forward are to purchase and install instrumentation for PAM's monitoring. That's photochemical assessment, that's precursors for ozone. It'll be a system very similar to our air toxics gas chromatograph, but this one is specific in monitoring sixty-plus VOCs that are precursors for ozone. Also install a silometer at Arcana's Lane site, which measures cloud height, and that gives us information about the meteorology when ozone production occurs. We still strive to enhance the meteorological network, and that supports our pollutant knowledge base and gives us an understanding of pollutant transport and the origin of pollution. We continue to work with our air toxics technology, OTC, our air monitoring chemist is one of the leaders, I think, in the country in refining this technology. And we're moving forward, we're very optimistic about the data that we're getting from the OTC. And we, our one additional goal is to enhance our evaluation of low-cost sensors that can be used by the public and gather their own information. We want to help them do that, as these sensors are becoming more and more prevalent and allow our data to help enhance these sensors and let people know which are the best sensors out there to use.
So emissions analysis, so I'll hand that over to Matt.
All right, I'm Matt King. I manage the permitting section, and one of our duties is to do the annual emissions inventory. We do both the big stationary sources, and then we do some estimates for local and area sources as well. And you heard about a few months ago, we have gone through some proposals for an online electronic submittal of these emission inventories. We're developing that now with a vendor, it's called SLICE, state and local emission inventory systems used in a lot of other communities. Should really help to streamline the process, require a lot less data entry and a lot less paper to be handed between the two parties. This year, we did the forty-one point sources and turned those into EPA to be part of the national emission inventory. Our goal is to get this system up and running. Eventually, it will be the only way to report emissions. Of course, this year, we're still doing it with paper and regular submittals. We're going to open this up, bring in a few of the companies to help us kind of test the system and make sure it's ready to work, and then break it out for next year's reporting season. Ozone, again, as Keith said, is the issue in Louisville, air quality for criteria pollutants. And we really need to have good data to understand that problem and propose ways to solve it. So this emission analysis is a big part of that ongoing effort. Permitting, again, is one of our main duties, and a ten-year manager of the section left earlier this year. So been with the district a while, but I'm new to be back in the permitting section. That can be challenging for staff. There's a lot of variance in how permits are done. So they've kind of seen over this year some different preferences and ways of writing permits, but they've all handled that very well and been able to turn out a lot of good work. So we've issued thirty-three construction permits. That authorizes that new activity. That usually is the main concern of the industrial sources, that they can get those construction permits timely. We renewed five of our Title V permits. Those are the largest emitters in the county, and we revised eighteen of those. So not all permit actions are the same. Some of those revisions might simply note any new owner of the facility, some are much more in-depth. But those often take a lot of our time and resources to keep that permit up to date. The FEDU, everyone's favorite acronym, is the middle-sized categories. They have a higher potential, but their actuals have been limited to below major source level. We issued three of those permits, but revised twenty of them. Again, those revisions are a lot of our work to keep up with changes in processes and changes in regulation. We also do a lot of small-source permitting in Louisville. Those are individually not that significant, but all together really add up to some of our air quality impacts. We issued twenty-four permits, registered twenty-four sources, and exempted seven. That's kind of a legacy of the district permitting almost everyone who emitted air pollution. We've seen a great benefit to treating those a little more softly and putting our resources into those Title V and FEDU permits. That was initiated maybe five or six years ago, and it's really been a good thing in the permitting section. Some of our goals for the next year, we have two Title V permits that have been expired for quite a while. Unfortunately, some jurisdictions have the original list of Title V's, and some haven't even received their first permit. But some of these, these two go back away, they're really complicated sources. We hope to have those issued this year, and that'll put us pretty up to date on the Title V world. Just to be clear, without a current permit, they still follow the old permit. They have to meet all rules and conditions. But getting it up to date makes that understanding of what's required more easy. It makes the inspector's life a lot more easy to have that up-to-date permit. So we're going to prioritize those. You know, air toxics is another big issue in Louisville. And the STAR program, although successful and has a good impact, it is confusing and complex. So we really want to speak clearly in these permits, give clear instruction to companies as what compliance is, and then allow our compliance staff to be able to verify that. And then keeping those Title V's renewed and up to date, that's something we just want to hit our mark, get those applications timely, work through them, and keep everybody up with active permits.
Steve Revett, managing compliance and enforcement sections. The industrial compliance section, so the inspectors, mostly engineers that go to the industrial permitting sites. We met our EPA goals, they mandate a certain level of inspections and our frequency, we met those. We maintained the recording requirements to EPA, and our risk management plan coordinator performed a great deal of inspections for the risk management sites as for hazardous and especially hazardous and explosive chemicals. For that section, we... My inspector, Tom Field. For that section, we're trying to use next-generation compliance techniques on these inspections. We've got an IR camera that we share with the state. We're trying to implement using that for full compliance evaluations regularly. And then we're transitioning to a new supervisor. I've been filling to that role as well as a manager position for almost a year now. We're trying to get that position filled, so that cover a little better. Also, in industrial compliance section is asbestos in gas stations. These numbers are about what they normally are. Our real big goal for this year for gas stations is achieving the decommissioning of Stage Two. A few years back, we changed the regulation because the EPA said we've reached a critical point where Stage Two controls were working against the onboard vapor recovery systems. And the board set a goal in the regulation for the end of two thousand and eighteen as the time that should be done. We've almost achieved that, and we're trying to use compliance assistance to get the last few stations over. And if we have to, we'll use enforcement in the upcoming months. Community compliance, this is the compliance officers that go out and respond to other complaints, dust complaints, and do field observations for those. We responded to three hundred and sixty-four citizens' complaints. We're trying to drive that number up. Just because that number is there doesn't mean we're capturing everything. We're trying to encourage people at all opportunities to call and complain. Five-seven-four-six-thousand, let us know there's a problem. We've got that section fully staffed, so we're ready to respond. We've developed outreach materials to give people, and they're talking to us about complaining, and they're going to community meetings. And that's really our goal for the year, and it continues. Get out in the public, tell people to call us, let us know, here's the information we need, here's the documents you can have to help us. For enforcement, we collected two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars worth of penalties. Issued nine NOVs. I don't want to really increase the number of NOVs, but we do need to respond to problems. That's not really a goal for the year, but our goal is really to reduce the time from when a inspector or compliance officer finds a violation to the time that, you know, is issued. That helps the public, us, and the companies all work together to resolve these problems.
Yeah, I always stand in the worst spots. I'm going to stand up and keep tally, shoulder to shoulder, I guess. This slide has a lot of information about our technology and our records, but I would really be remiss if I didn't point out that our administrative staff do so much more and doesn't really lend itself to metrics and tracking and numbers. But we're thankful every single day for them for getting us paid, for making things get purchased, for getting our documents in the door scanned, uploaded, so that our engineers can work with them. We're getting good meeting minutes for our board meetings. So while that may not be reflected in a PowerPoint slide, the work that they do keeps us running day in and day out. So I really appreciate our very busy admin staff that is not a deep bench. So they all do some key roles for us. What I have highlighted here on this slide are some things that you all have heard about already in this meeting. Some of our information systems projects. So we have four really large projects that have started in the past year and are hopefully going to be coming to fruition in this year. We have the transition from the Hanson Eight Database Work Order Management System, permitting system, it's kind of the, everything happens in Hanson across Metro Government that our work is, our workflow is directed through. And we're transitioning a whole new system. That's been a huge lift for many people at the district to make sure that that gets set up correctly so that we can continue doing our work when that transition happens. There'll also be a public-facing aspect to that as the act through which those complaints that Stephen mentioned, that we're trying to get people to get less information, hopefully this new act that will allow that, make that even more user-friendly and will encourage people to use that. So that has started in the past couple of years, actually, and we're really hoping that that transition is completed in this year. We also launched a project last year to transition our electronic document management system to a new system. It'll have some expanded capabilities, and that's a large project for us because we have many, many, many thousands, hundreds of thousands of documents that we have and we keep for very long time periods through the course of our work. So that's a really large project, that's mostly an internal project, but it may also have some benefit with some of our open records searches and response. So that's going to help across the agency and records management. And I've just mentioned open records, we do a risk business in open records. Many of them are for environmental site assessments, and so the past year, we did a hundred and thirty-eight of those. And that's just the bread and butter day-in-and-day-out job of Kevin Huskett, who's our records coordinator. So does much more than that, but that's certainly a full-time role here at the district. We've also have a goal that we started last year, and we're working through the vendor this year to revamp our online Louisville air watch map. So that's where people can go in and see air monitoring values in real time at all of our air monitoring sites across the county. We're hoping to have some improved user interface, additional information available. And then in the second phase of that project, they'll look back to find past information and not just the current value at each of those sites. And then lastly, Matt mentioned already, the online emissions inventory system. We're going to have that up and running for internal use this year and with full implementation in next year for company use as well. The other hat that I wear here, that is my executive administrator hat, this is the director of program planning hat, so this has a little bit more of a broader look at our work at the agency. Twenty eighteen, we really had a lot of focus on expanding our community engagement offerings, our participation with community events, and just availability of... our participation with community events, and just availability of opportunity for our community and district staff to have conversations and discussions and really share the work that we do and the importance of air quality in our community. So to that end, we had a survey of our community to find out what areas of our work people are interested in, and as well as what times of day, what days of the week would you want to hear about that? Because we kicked off Clearing the Air Workshop Series. We actually just had our first of twenty nineteen on Monday, with good success, thank Torin Collins, who's been leading that effort. We've had a larger crowd, and a great new room at the library, so I'll encourage everyone to come see us next month. It's the third Monday of every month, six o'clock at the main library. Next month, we're going to be doing APCD one oh one, so something everybody here should be interested in. We also have been just trying to get into more events that are out there in the community, so we can kind of go to where people are already to share our work and information about what we do. And we've collaborated with some specific community partners to support their events. So we sponsored the West Jackson County Community Task Force, the ACP Environmental Justice Conference. We sponsored the Louisville Sustainability Council, the Sustainability Summit, and the Evolve KY Drive Water Clean. All of these are really important groups to promoting air quality awareness in Louisville. We also continue doing some work from previous year, so we had some work for the board that you all did for us with some revisions. We also continued the leadership role in community collaborative efforts such as the Regional Mobility Council, and Bradley Coons chaired that and helped plan their annual transportation summit, which had a big impact on air quality. And we continued our work with the Louisville resilience team, and actually Keith was a co-leader of the infrastructure discovery area community input process, so that was, of course, about six to eight meetings in the evenings at the library, and it's really great discussions, and we'll talk much more with the board about that resilience work as that continues. So in twenty nineteen, we want to continue all that good work from twenty eighteen. As I've mentioned, we kicked off Clearing the Air Workshop table, we'll continue to get a workshop series, we'll continue to get out there tabling any community events. I invite anyone that has an event that you'd like to see APCD come to, to let us know, we're always interested in hearing about that. And we're also hoping to get out there and share some of our workshop series materials and other information. Keith mentioned the Bellarmine series that we're speaking at, we have at least two other university classes we're talking to already lined up, and a couple of other presentations to different groups about different aspects of our work. So we're really interested in going to where folks are already. So to the extent that you can help us do that, let us know where to be, and we'll be there. We're going to keep the board busy again this year, we've got some advanced notice of proposals we'll make that went out in twenty eighteen, and so we'll be following up that work. Where is Byron Gary? We'll keep you all well informed of that work as we go forward. And then we're going to continue our work leading the dry cleaning Louisville team. We know that local sources are something that we have to work at in a collaborative, cross-functional manner, and so we're working with the Louisville Sustainability, excuse me, the Office of Sustainability, as well as the innovation team, try to find some creative ways to get folks into alternative fuel vehicles, and especially with a focus on electric vehicles. We mentioned already the ozone study that we are trying to get off the ground, and that's going to be an important piece of our work over the next year as we try to get a finer understanding of the formation of ozone, which contributes from those precursors of NOCs and VOCs, and what the main drivers are so that we can make very smart strategic choices about that. They'll be done in the context, though, of multi-pollutant air quality management plan that we're working with EPA to develop. So it's a little bit different approach, it's not just looking at one pollutant and the impact of those strategies, but rather what would be the impact of strategies to reduce the pollutant on other pollutants? So can we get co-benefits out of these strategies? Reduce VOCs in one place, maybe that's also an air toxics reduction strategy, or maybe a NOCs reduction strategy that also reduce fine particulates. All of these things are going to have additional health benefits, and really, that's the underpinnings of our work. So there'll be a lot of phases to this project as we go through, and that will include stakeholder input on those strategies, and EPA is then going to help us map those strategies to health benefits, so that we can kind of weigh out and demonstrate that benefit to public health of any of these different air quality management strategies. And then lastly, as I say, we want to continue partnering with community groups, and these are just a handful of the ones that we really work with on a close basis. The Superfund Research Center is part of the Enviro Institute at the University of Louisville. We've committed to being a member of the community advisory board for that work, and that is something that we hope really becomes an established part of the Enviro Institute and their connection to the community with the research that they're doing. And then we'll continue to be part of the resilience strategy. In particular, there's a great focus on equity in the resilience strategy, and an environmental justice policy for our city has come out of that work group's recommendations, and we want to make sure that APCD is a part of that work. It's important to our work, and we want to share that leadership role with the rest of metro government. And then lastly, because Bradley Coons is unfortunately out today, but he had a really great year with Grow More, More Less and Lawn Care for Cleaner Air last year. We topped our goal of five hundred rebates, which was an increase over the previous years. He did that with some different advertising strategies, that's kind of not what we do here on a day-to-day basis, so we have to get creative and go a little bit outside of our normal realm on that, and it really worked last year. So next year, there's going to be a goal on continuing to maintain that level and seeing if we can bump that up again. Those cleaner lawn care equipment is an important part of air quality management in Louisville, and can be a really great strategy for ozone reduction as well. So in twenty nineteen, we also are hoping to find some new partnerships for supporting our Grow More, More Less program and finding some demonstration projects perhaps.
Okay, I'm Dee Litch, I am community outreach coordinator for CARE Kentucky and at Air Education. As you can see from this slide, I'm going to give a few of the highlights of CARE's year. One of those was a redesign of our website, which is healthyair.org. If you haven't been there, I encourage you to visit. We got a refresh, we were a little bit overdue, especially not just in the overall look. And it's great to look good with a new website, but the functionality is foremost. And as you may know, most people will cruise the web, not so much on their PC anymore, but on their phone, so being mobile-friendly was a big part of the revamping of the website. We did some reconnoisseur tidying up to make sure that when people got to the website, from perhaps hearing their commercial about CARE, that they were able to quickly find the air quality forecast, that they could get information about key issues, and even more importantly, find out how they can help make our air quality better here in Louisville. As always, CARE is a friendly voice, you know, telling you about things that you can do to help the air. Oops, I hit the wrong one. But then, I'm not saying that. And now I'm really confused, we're trying to... Those of you who have strived the car rider lines at schools will recognize the little tag that we have here. I'd like to point this out as a very efficient use of grant funds, because CARE sponsors those vehicle ID tags for JCPS for a very small amount of money, for literally pennies. We have our message on sixty-four thousand vehicle ID tags throughout the county, ninety-four schools, and on a daily basis, as students are being picked up by their parents, they see that idle-free message in front of them right where that behavior is happening, where people may be idling, and that repeated exposure to air pollution in a school parking lot on school days is something that we really want to focus on and make sure that kids are really using. A few places where we're putting the idle-free signage. As Logan Street Market opens, I felt it was very important that idle-free be as part of that landscape as that revitalization is going on, so they're going to have idle-free signage. Metro Animal Services is building a new shelter, they have a sign for their old shelter, they put in a new one, they'll have that. These are, I worked with a group of students at Manuel High School, the student contact means part of their World Wildlife Club, and as a project, they had noticed that the school buses were idling for too long in front of the school. JCPS has an idle-free policy, but as you know, enforcement may not be as rigid as it needs to be. So after talking with me, meeting on the facts, doing an education project, they sat down with their transportation head and talked to them about the buses to get them to stop by the lane in front of the school log that they need to be, and they got signage up in front of their school as well. It's a big part of what CARE does is to market to the public. We have done that through various ways, with a small budget, we've been able to reach a lot of people through radio, through social media, targeted campaigns that reach people that are willing to make a change that will affect air quality. You may have heard our slogan, count to ten, far off then. You also, if you haven't already liked us on Facebook or followed us on Twitter, what are you waiting for? You know, we've increased that group, so come along with us. And one thing that has been effective for us as well is the TARP bus wraps, since TARP buses travel throughout the city and, you know, they take different routes, and those messages go out to all the neighborhoods. And wrap up just a few goals for twenty nineteen, as always, I'm going to empower people with the information they need to know and make sure that they are changing behaviors that can affect air quality. We are always pursuing CMAC funding for the program, and we're always out in the community at festivals, at health and safety fairs, and working with groups that want to make a difference by becoming idle-free.
Excellent overview, but I do have one question, I think, that I know that you mentioned sulfur dioxide. I know that the LGD, they burn their coal burning over the gap. Do we have any tile file of major sources that are still burning coal?
We do, we have several.
Smaller.
Medical Center, comes to mind.
Milk Creek.
And Cosmos burns coal as part of its cement making process.
Excellent overview, thank you very much. Moving on, our quality data, are there any questions from any board members regarding the air monitoring data, ozone PM? What about the APCD enforcement status report? Any questions? And moving on to the excess emission report. Has this report, someone got more on this report this month, is that...
I don't have a copy of the report in front of me, but one of the, one of our regulated entities had a pretty bad month.
Okay. That's, okay, very good, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from any board members? Here and now, our journalist meeting until March twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, and today, I'm thankful for your attendance.